Remember what it was like to be a kid? To explore and play? To roam free all day? In Jamestown, North Carolina, we get out of the grind and escape into the moment. People feel good here. Eat well here. Feel swell here. We go for a ride or an afternoon stroll. We cheer each other on. Here, a treasured history meets the energy of a town on the rise. In a place with true heart and soul. And where we have our own special beat. Jamestown, North Carolina, where history and possibility meet.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Councilmember Wolf, please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Wolf?
Here.
Councilmember Capes?
Here.
Mayor Montgomery?
Here.
Councilmember Strawn?
Here.
Councilmember Raver?
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Capes, would you lead the pledge?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads for a moment of silence. Thank you. Council, are there any items to be added or deleted or changed on the agenda?
I don't have anything.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I would make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. And do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Katie, has anyone signed up for public comment? Please state your name and your address.
I'm Julia Evil. I live at 5312 Montavista Drive, Greensboro.
Thank you.
Right by Jamestown, Jamestown's home, though. Yes. I'm speaking on behalf of concerns with development and in particular protecting biodiversity. Not everyone has an active sense of wonder. For me, that sense of wonder is a blessing, one that is nurtured by the natural environment. It is essential to my well-being, and I am not alone. But whether one consciously draws energy and solace from the natural world, we all need what the natural world provides, including clean, oxygen-rich air that gives us breath and life itself. As president of Historic Jamestown Society and as owner of property here in the hands of my family over 100 years, and as a writer with a focus on stories of the people, I see how closely land and nature affect lives and shape our stories. Already, much of Jamestown's history has been covered, cut down, and yes, exposed to invasive elements from English ivy to Chinese privet to Japanese stilt grass and more. Why have so many creative people drawn from the natural world? For their inspiration, be they musicians, visual artists, poets, and many others. Because energy is there in the colors of native plants and the graceful movement of butterflies and birds and tiny blueheads to graceful ferns and towering oaks and beech trees. And peace, peace is there. What lessons are we taking from tomorrow's children if we allow broad expanses of nature's flora and fauna to be removed? Lessons of awareness, of sensitivity, of compassion, of peace, and of belonging? Yes, we can welcome new residents to our community, but please let's be aware of what we permit in land use, including disruption and loss. Let's require surveys that identify the biodiversity, the biodiverse richness of these large and significant tracts, Harvey Road and the Johnson property included. Let's use informed best practices gained from these surveys to keep adequate protected natural space to benefit natural biodiversity of these places and the history and heritage they hold. Jamestown can be a national model of diligence and sensitivity in development. And wouldn't that be a reputation to cherish? As a town that respects and protects history and biodiversity of all life, interwoven with quality of life and healthy living, let's require the relevant surveys and informed best practices and insist on sustainable quality of life over dollars and make Jamestown the best it can be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Has anyone else signed up?
I'm not, but I'd like to speak if I can.
Has had anyone else signed up?
Yeah, Patricia Gray.
Is it okay for her first?
That'll be fine.
Good evening. I just want to introduce myself. My name is Stephanie Stevens. I live at 204 Guilford Road. I've been a resident of Jamestown for almost eight years, and I absolutely love this town. I've grown a lot since I moved here. I'm a master's student at the University of North Carolina, Greensboro, and I study environment and sustainability. And I just want to mention that one of the most fantastic things about Jamestown is, without being recognized for sustainability, we are essentially everything a sustainable community is. And so I am part of a group, and we are a new group affiliated with no other group, called the Environment and Sustainability Coalition of Jamestown. And we have created a Facebook page. We have 110 members, mostly all from our community. And I just wanted to say the point of our page is just to educate people in our community and anybody outside of it about biodiversity, sustainable development, and urban forests. And we want to support Jamestown Council and the community in future planning. And we are interested in the concept of a sustainability council and possibly an urban forestry council, similar to High Point, North Carolina, and Greensboro. And so I just wanted to introduce myself and several other members of our group are here, and I just appreciate everything that you guys are doing, and that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Gray. I live at 105 Bellwood Court in Jamestown. I too am part of the Environmental and Sustainability Coalition of Jamestown. We are living in an era of rapidly changing values and priorities. Daily headlines warn us about the rapid decline of the natural environment, the degrading of the air and water qualities, the loss of other species. So what? Who cares? Why does it matter? I've got my townhouse, my SUV, my job. The kids are in school and doing okay. We drive good roads. We have good shopping. We eat well. That's the bubble we humans live in and have assumed for decades that it is a reliable lifestyle. But we live because the natural environment provides a network of support for us. Native trees and plants capture poisonous CO2 and turn it into oxygen so that we can breathe. They filter the water of toxins and carcinogens. Pollinators, critical for providing our food, rely on these plants and trees. Birds, other animals, insects, larvae, microbes, all are essential for our existence. Their loss will be our demise, literally. We must adapt to a new era, a new era that supports and protects this complex, intricate, and vital circle of life. We have no choice if we want to ensure there are healthy families and children now and for generations to come. You have this responsibility before you. You must protect and support the circle of life that includes humans and others. You can do this by using science to create a safer and healthier future. Know about which assets you're negotiating. Insist on collecting data. You need ARBIST reports. You need carbon capture reports, endangered species reports that include plants and animals. You must know what parameters are critical, not just legal, to ensure the circle of life. Employ sustainable practices, just as our town's website claims. Biodiversity and sustainability practices are local decisions. You are the deciders for the quality of life in Jamestown, the region, the state, not only for now, but for the future of generations. The existential threat is upon us. You are part of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Has anyone else signed up, Katie?
Nobody else signed up.
Okay, thank you. Matthew, would you introduce the first public hearing?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have, I'm going to ask Ty if he would dawn the lights here for us so we can see the screen a little bit better. We have two, actually, two public hearings, but I'm going to present information on the entire packet, just because the annexation request and the rezoning request go hand-in-hand. When it comes to the second public hearing, I'll ask you if you have any more questions or concerns, and I'd be glad to address those at that time. Otherwise, we'll move on into the second public hearing. We're here for Annexation Request 202201 ANX and Rezoning Request 202201. This is for, they had a parcel at 4718 Harvey Road, proposed rezoning from agricultural to conditional zoning bypass for approximately 31.4 acres. The applicant is requesting rezoning from ag to conditional zoning bypass for the following reasons. The application stated to develop a site that includes attached two-car garage master down townhomes with the potential for a two-and-a-half-acre commercial site. During subsequent conversations with neighbors and the staff, the applicant has decided to withdraw the consideration of the commercial components for this rezoning request. Just as a little bit of a refresher about what conditional zoning is, conditional zoning is a legislative process where the local government may consider map amendments that adds additional conditions. Conditional zoning map amendments change the zoning district for that specific piece of property, but don't include any standards beyond the base standards of the zoning ordinance. Conditional zoning allows the local government and the applicant to agree on additional conditions which may be appropriate for this particular project within the context of the larger rezoning. In the LDO, our Land Development Ordinances, the bypass district was established to provide opportunities for compatible and sustainable development along the future Jamestown bypass. I'm not going to read the entire slide, but essentially, the standards were there to acknowledge that the automobile is the primary mode of transportation. Development and design standards would encourage pedestrian-scale development along secondary street networks, and the goal of the bypass district would be to provide a pleasant environment for both motorists and for pedestrians, preserving the capacity of the bypass to accommodate high volumes of traffic at high speeds. And the uses in this district would include services, employment, and residential and The conditions that the applicant have presented to us are that, number one, no apartments would be allowed. The maximum number of residential lots would be 95. Setbacks, a minimum front setback of 30 feet along the internal roads and 70 feet along Harvey Road are requested. A few architectural standards, I'm going to read these. Vinyl exterior with some element of stone or brick wainscoting on the front. Decorative vinyl shakes or board and batten in the front gable. And shutters per plan and elevation, some of their elevations are designed not to be used with shutters. And then a variety of elevations with neutral exterior colors. And finally, the last condition was that a traffic impact analysis would be completed before the rezoning is heard by the town council. Developer has completed that, and we have received some comments back from DOT that they did not have any additional suggestions other than what they had originally come up with for the development. I know that the applicant's going to speak a little bit more to that. Once they took the commercial components out and they put the additional townhomes on internal streets, they approved the traffic impact analysis. Just so that you can see an example of what the new layout looks like, you can see that there is one main entrance. That's the, is that the right? That is the right one. Is that correct, Rich?
Yes.
Yep, okay, just want to make sure. It's a little smaller on my piece of paper and it's a little darker in here. One main entrance and then the side roads where the townhomes would be accessible off of internal streets. Otherwise, it hasn't changed significantly since the planning board saw this, just the removal of the commercial components. Our comprehensive plan identifies this area as a primary growth area. This is based on current use, parcel size, the access to major transportation route, and mostly the availability of utilities. There is water and sewer available at this site. The future land use map identified this area as mixed use, and the thought processes there revolved around the fact that the bypass was going to be an active transportation network where you would see, you know, the desire for commercial and residential to come into this area. So we anticipated that desire, and like I say, the commercial has been removed from this particular request at this time. So at this time, the only thing that we are considering is residential. There are several guiding principles that are in the comprehensive plan that apply to this. Number one, Jamestown will actively facilitate high-quality growth that's both compatible with the town's traditional development pattern and innovative in how it meets the needs of our diverse and dynamic community. It asks us to implement subdivision standards that facilitate growth in a manner that achieves the town's desired urban development pattern and the quality of public infrastructure. Number two, guiding principle number two, as the strength of our community is directly tied to the long-term success of our neighborhoods, we will work diligently to promote and maintain the quality of life and aesthetic standards that our residents expect. Action item was ensure that Jamestown's residents have access to housing that is appropriate for all stages of life and family situations, including housing to allow older residents to, quote, "age in place." Guiding principle number 10, Jamestown is a welcoming and inclusive community that values the benefits of diversity in all aspects of the town and its residents, with an action item to promote the development and the retention of a wide range of housing types that meets the needs of current and future residents of all ages, abilities, family compositions, and socioeconomic backgrounds. And finally, guiding principle number 11, the quality and health of the natural environment is as important to our community as the quality of the built environment, and we'll work to preserve and protect these vital resources, with an action item of protect and preserve mature trees and tree stands from removal in conjunction with land development activity, and then promote the growth of healthy forests in the community. Protect riparian areas from encroachment by development to help preserve water quality and natural habitats. I know that there was a lot of discussion about this particular subdivision request as it relates to its proximity to the middle school and Haynes-Zimmern. We have, I know that the applicant has their transportation folks here. I'll let them speak a little bit to that. We reached out to Guilford County Schools, and the information there for Donna Bell is on the screen. She did, at this time, Anna was here, and she was talking to Anna about the fact that they are broken up by grades for car riders, the time and location, and then they have a lot of, a lot more people are using car pickup than are riding on buses right now, particularly in response to COVID. So they had seen some increase in traffic related to that particular issue. I know that a couple of you have had opportunities to go out and view that during peak time, so I'll let you speak to that later. There are a couple of decisions that are before the council this evening. First, should the property be annexed into the town of Jamestown? The clerk and the town attorney have reviewed the annexation petition and found it to be sufficient. Notice was given, and the ordinance is included in your packet this evening, and it is ready for adoption by the town council. A second decision is whether or not the CZ bypass zoning district, along with the suggested conditions, are the correct zoning, is the correct zoning district to apply in this situation. Also, is the request consistent with our comprehensive plan, and is it in the public interest? Town staff have reviewed the request, and they feel that the CZ bypass zoning, along with the suggested conditions, is appropriate. It is consistent with the envisioned Jamestown comprehensive plan, and the planning board met and concurred with that, and they recommended approval unanimously at the July 18, 2022 meeting. Unfortunately, our chair was not able to be with us this evening, so I did report that on behalf of the planning board. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions, Council?
Well, as far as on the annexation, because that's the first public hearing to decide on, we have said that public water is available.
That's correct.
And the developer?
Water and sanitary.
And the developer wants to get a sewer easement. Have they?
Yes, that has been secured.
And we know public safety is available there.
Absolutely.
Will they, this development, provide their own trash and recycling pickup?
My understanding is that we would provide solid waste pickup to this, just as we do with all the other residents in town.
Okay, I know it would be in townhomes.
Same services.
And the roads would be public, then?
That's correct.
Okay.
There would be, they would be built and dedicated to the town. The town council would have to accept that as a public street. That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure we could service it and we can.
So standard curb and gutter, nothing wonky in terms of?
I'll let the applicant speak to the design of the curb and gutter. I don't, we haven't gotten into that detail yet.
That's fair.
Any other questions for Matthew?
If you give me just one second, I'm going to pull the applicant's presentation up if you're done with me.
Well, are we going to go ahead and decide, make our motion here for the annexation? Are you going to go ahead and have your?
If it's okay, my, the way I would like to do this is allow the applicant to bring in their information as well.
Okay.
We would have the public hearing for the annexation, and then the second item would be the annex, or the consideration of the rezoning request.
But you'll need?
If the, you know, for the public hearings, just for ease of public comment, if they want to comment under the annexation, they would be considered for both items, if you will.
But you'll need two motions, different?
That's correct. It'll be one motion for the annexation, one motion for the rezoning, and then there's the consistency statement adoption, of course.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Montgomery and members of the council. My name is Charlie Hall. Address 1007 Battleground Avenue, Greensboro, North Carolina. Along with me tonight, I have Tom Hall, President of Windsor Homes, Rich Glover with Glover Engineering, and Deion Brown with Davenport Engineering. So a little bit about Windsor Homes. We have been a builder, developer in the Triad since 2001, and since that time, we have built a little bit over 3,700 homes in the area. We are locally owned and managed. Current communities in the High Point and Triad area include Copperfield Glen, which is a townhome community, Canter Creek, which is a single-family community, Magnolia Main, which is a townhome community, and Williard Place, which is also a single-family community. So a little bit about the Harvey Road proposal, which Matthew already covered a bunch of it, so I'll try to go pretty quick here. This is a 31.4-acre site. We are requesting zoning to conditional bypass from agriculture. Our plan is compatible with the 2020 comprehensive plan. The conditions are included up here that Matthew already covered. Here's the site plan. As you can see, in the northeast corner, we have removed that commercial component from our site and added townhomes in its place. We have also removed the access onto Harvey Road from the six units you see there to the south. Those would be accessed from a private drive. Those are the main changes that we made since the last meeting. Here's the comprehensive plan that Matthew already shown. We are in the orange region there in the center, and that is a mixed-use area, and we feel that our proposal will fit well in this area and give a good diversity of housing in this area. Site plan? Site plan comments. This has been reviewed by staff, and the comments have been addressed. We made a couple of changes after we heard the staff's concerns, as well as the neighbors' concerns. We are proposing two-unit, three-unit, and four-unit townhome product. The site restrictions, such as the topography, the wetlands, have made this a challenging site. Therefore, we're trying to consolidate the development on better, better land versus spreading out over the development. We want to stay away from the, you know, streams and steep slopes that this site provides. And 30% of the site is made up of stream and perimeter buffers. And that will be undisturbed, and if we do disturb any of it, it will be revegetated as we move along in the development process. We foresee building a maximum of 95 townhomes on this site per the condition. That is approximately three units per acre. You know, if we did go the maximum route here of 12 units per acre allowed in the zoning district, that would give us up to a maximum number of 376 units. So we are toning this down pretty good to just three units a acre. And the townhomes will be focused on the move-down buyer slash empty nester. And we'll really be focused to a piece of those who want to, you know, age in place and want a product that has less, less maintenance, you know, they don't have to go out there and other yards, take care of any exterior maintenance as well. So here's a couple of site considerations about transportation. The site will be accessed from Harvey Road, we'll have one entrance into the site. The TIA has been performed by Davenport Engineering and signed off by the NCDOT, and we have Deion Brown here, he's going to cover some more results from that study. The traffic count between Vicarry Chapel and Oakdale Road were about 3,800 in 2022. And, let's see here, we are going to have sidewalks that will be installed along the Harvey Road frontage just to make the pedestrian connectivity better. Streams and wetlands, they are present on the site, they will be minimally impacted. And we are proposing two storm water control measurements, and the HOA will maintain all storm water control measures, signage, mailboxes, and all common areas. Neighborhood communication, we did send a letter out on June 2nd to all the adjoining neighbors. Thirty-nine total letters went out, and we held a virtual meeting via Zoom on June 9th. A total of four households attended this meeting. And we also sent out email inquiries and placed a couple of phone calls to surrounding neighbors as well that called in with our concerns. And we understand this is a change for this area of Jamestown, but we do feel confident that our plan will be attractive to this area, and it fits reasonably well with the Jamestown comprehensive plan. A little bit about our proposed homes. As mentioned earlier, we're going to, as a condition, there is a maximum of 95 townhomes proposed. All dwellings will have two-car garage, and the master bedroom would be on the first level. Architectural features, these are already covered as a condition. And as mentioned earlier, we are appealing to the move-down buyer who wants to age in place, and the homeowner who wants less maintenance as well. Examples of the homes are here. And this one's a three-unit, and the development we're proposing will have two, three, and four-unit buildings. So in conclusion, we fill our request. We'll offer good housing options in this area of Jamestown. We're confident the community will see this as a successful, successful project. And I'm happy to answer any questions you all have at this time.
I'm wondering if you might have a potential estimate on price points?
So those are definitely ever-changing in this market, as you guys know. So if I had to give a rough estimate of these, I mean, anywhere from, you know, 300 to 400, hard to tell, as the market is ever-changing, so.
From the, excuse me, from the rerouted access to those front units along Harvey Road, is it set up, and maybe this has been mentioned, it just flowed over my head, but has it been set up to where it can still be serviced by our, by our public services for trash pickup and whatnot?
I believe so, I'm going to let Rich Glover chime in more on that. I know he's had some discussions.
Just wanted to confirm that.
Any other questions, Mr. Hall?
No questions. I don't have any questions right now, I'll listen to everybody else.
Okay.
Get all the information.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did anyone else want to speak on other conditions?
Good evening, my name is Deion Brown, I'm with Davenport, a licensed engineer with the state of 4,600 Marriott Drive, Raleigh, North Carolina. We did do the TIA for this development based upon NCDOT guidelines of congestion management. Congestion management also reviewed it, as well as the district office reviewed it. We went back after the last meeting and did coordinate with the Guilford County Schools to make sure that we had a great estimate of what the schools were, as well as their bus situation as the first study was done, I think during the summertime, so we went back to get that information. We also redid the trip generation to take out the commercials, so there is no commercial trips associated with this TIA, as well as the access point on Harvey as one single access. The improvements for this development that we concluded were turn lanes, a left and a right into the site, and then a left and a right coming out of the site as well. DOT did respond back on December 5th, agreeing with our study, and they had no additional comments that we have. Do you have any questions for me?
So turning lane will be added-
Yes, ma'am.
On Harvey going in and then coming out?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
A left and a right.
And DOT, that was all that they were concerned about, or they agreed with that?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
As far as the rerouting of the one cluster group that I've mentioned a moment ago to Charlie, is that going to be easily accessible for our trash pickup and so forth, based on the way it's laid out?
I think that's Rich's question.
Rich's question, sorry, wrong person.
We'll get there in a second.
I'll get there one day.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Rich, you may want to come to the microphone.
Guess which question I'm going to ask? Third time's a charm.
I'm Rich Glover with Glover Engineering, and as far as, can we get back? Can we get back to the roll site plan? Yeah, after going through the TIA process and talking with NCDOT, they did not want the connections coming straight across here.
Right.
But in order to utilize a portion of this, which is good land up here, we talked with the town, and there's provisions in the ordinance for a private drive and such when we have constraints such as access and environmental constraints and things like that. And so what we're doing here is a private drive going down through here, which would be maintained by the HOA, just this one section. However, we have a sidewalk that we'll be installing along Harvey Road, and then we'll have access to that sidewalk from these units. So you can have the pickup like anyone else on Harvey Road would have-
Got it.
As far as for trash pickup, they will not be going down the private drive.
I was trying to figure that part out.
Yeah, very good, yeah.
What about fire department?
Fire department there, it would be accessed from Harvey Road, this will all be, all be at grade. And so, just like any other house along Harvey Road, they'd have access. And we are extending a water line across the frontage of the property as part of this project, which will be a benefit to the town, because I know Paul's trying to get loops, loops in the system, which is better for everybody, better water quality, better water pressure. And so by then putting this in, it'll help save the town from having to do that portion of improvements themselves.
Good, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for Rich?
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. The town and the applicant, I'll now open this to the public. Is there anyone who would like to speak concerning this annexation? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and return to council. Council, do you have discussion?
Well, I was going to say, this area is in the town's annexation agreement that we have with the city of High Point, and have had for, I don't know, twenty, a couple of decades.
Eighties.
Yeah, I was going to say, as long as I can remember. And the town's envisioned Jamestown comp plan that was adopted in the 2021, as was mentioned here, shows this area as a mixed use for future land use and on the future land use map and the preliminary growth area maps. So it seems appropriate that this be annexed into the town of Jamestown.
That felt suspiciously like a motion.
I was waiting if there's other discussion. Otherwise-
Other discussion?
Yeah.
No.
Then I would make a motion to adopt the ordinance to extend the corporate limits for the annexation of 4718 Harvey Road effective December 20th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think it's roll-
I'm sorry, that was a roll call, sorry. Katie.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Councilmember Capes?
Aye.
Councilmember Strawn?
Aye.
Councilmember Rayburn?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Matthew, do you have anything to add on the rezoning request from Windsor Homes?
Nothing further, Mayor.
Does the applicant or anyone with the applicant have any other information to add at this time? Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak concerning this rezoning request? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and return to council. Council, do you have additional discussion?
I was going to say, I do, I do commend the developer for listening to the residents that were at the planning board meeting, their concerns and, and changing or deleting the commercial use and changing that traffic pattern for those six units on Harvey Road. So I thought that was very proactive on them to listen and to make those changes. And I like the fact of the floor plans, the master bedroom being on the main level. I think this will appeal to the town's aging population, and we have a lot of folks that live in Jamestown that would like to scale down, that would stay in Jamestown, and this is much needed in the town. I would, this is not something the town can require, but I would encourage you to look at the AARP livable communities, which Jamestown is one, and Councilwoman Rayburn chairs that committee. But on their website, they have a lot of information regarding home fit guides, which give info on how to make homes safer and more comfortable and a great fit for older adults, and maybe even have some units for handicap accessible. Like I said, this isn't something the town can require you to do, but that would give your development a product that nobody else has, and would be unique, something unique. So I would just encourage you to look at that. But I think they've done a good job of doing this development.
I've been impressed by how proactive they've been as well. We haven't had to ask for these things, they did really respond to, you know, concerns of the public, and I feel like they really, you know, each time something came up, they tried to adapt to that. And even, you know, as he was saying, consolidating, you know, where the build is, and so you see the amount of green space there. You know, other builders would have wanted to spread out as much as possible and, and, you know, wouldn't have that same concern, so I appreciate that.
Just echo both what Martha and Rebecca said, and just a quick question. Any idea on build-out years? Depends on when the two of fours are ready, right?
Well, Tom Hall, 11, no, 1007 Battleground Avenue. You know, if you'd asked me a year ago, I would tell you it might be two or three years. If you ask me today, it might be five or six. I really don't know. I mean, life has changed really significantly in the housing market, and as Charlie pointed out, prices did this, and now they're kind of leveling, and we're, we're in for a little bit of a change in 2023. The good thing is, we're not going to have any houses to build in 2023, because we won't probably start moving dirt till late that year or early the next year. And so gives things a chance to settle out a little bit. But normally, if you would ask me, I don't know what normal is anymore, but if you would ask me, I would tell you that if you did 25 to 28 a year, so, you know, pick a number, three, four years, maybe, that's building the houses and selling them, but it'll take us a year or so to get the land development done.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just ditto his ditto to what Martha and Rebecca said, so leave it at that.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the rezoning request for 4718 Harvey Road from agricultural to conditional zoning bypass CZ-B with the following conditions. No apartments will be built on the property, there'll be a maximum of 95 townhomes. There will be no commercial uses on the site. A TIA will be completed, and the developers shall comply with the requirements identified in the TIA, and that there will be a 70-foot setback along Harvey Road.
In addition, the architectural-
Yeah, I was going to say, that's not on there, but he did a gracious architectural standard.
In addition to the architectural standards and conditions?
Can I speak about one thing that you just mentioned about the setback?
Yes.
That is an increased maximum setback, not a-
Maximum setback.
Yeah, the ordinance has a minimum and maximum setback.
Yeah.
And due to having the private drive, we had to push those further back from the maximum setback. So it's not a minimum setback.
Gotcha.
Maximum setback.
Maximum setback.
Thank you, Rich.
Of 70 feet.
And you added the architectural conditions to your motion?
To the motion, yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Katie.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Councilmember Capes?
Aye.
Councilmember Strawn?
Aye.
Councilmember Rayburn?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Matthew, do you have the approval of the lease agreement?
Well, I think I have the consistency statement.
Oh, I'm sorry, consistency.
Sorry. I make a motion that the proposed zoning amendment 202201 regarding 4718 Harvey Road be approved based on the following. The proposed zoning amendment is consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan of the town of Jamestown because the development facilitates growth in a manner that achieves the town's desired urban development pattern and quality of public infrastructure. And the proposed amendment is reasonable because it ensures Jamestown residents have access to housing that is appropriate for all stages of life and family situations, including housing to allow older residents to age in place. And the proposed amendment is in the public interest because the development promotes a use of housing types that meets the needs of current and future residents of all ages, abilities, family compositions, and socioeconomic backgrounds.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you, thank you, Martha.
Yes, ma'am.
Matthew. Pine Cross Sedgefield.
The town owns property at 6,007 West Gate City Boulevard. We would like to enter into a long-term ground lease with Pine Cross Sedgefield Fire Department for future use of that property for a fire station. That item is still under review by both the town attorney and the attorneys for Pine Cross Sedgefield. So we are respectfully requesting a continuation of this item until the February 21st, 2023 regular meeting without further advertisement, to be here in the civic center at Town Hall.
Any questions for Matthew?
I would make a motion to continue the consideration of the lease agreement with Pine Cross Sedgefield Fire Department for the property located at 6007 West Gate City Boulevard to February 21st Town Council meeting, 6:00 PM in the civic center without further advertisement.
Now?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. And Matthew, you have a request to set a public hearing date?
Yes, the town has received a request for some minor amendments to our planned unit development, pod, zoning district. The proposed amendment is necessary to allow for higher quality development by authorizing the development- the development agreement to address some issues which are a little bit ambiguous in our land development ordinance. We would like to schedule this item to be heard by the planning board on January the 9th of 2023 with a proposed hearing before the council on January 17th, 2023 during your regular meeting. We respectfully request that a public hearing date be set for that public hearing here in the Civic Center at 6:00 PM.
I moved to set a public hearing date for the consideration of a text amendment to the LDO regarding the PUD zoning district for the January 17th Town Council meeting at 6:00 PM in the Civic Center.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. And now, your manager's report.
I haven't left. I wanted to say, the loose leaf collection has began on October 24th, and it will run continuously until February the 24th. My one caveat is, is that we always ask people to get them out at least a week before the February 24th end date to give our crews enough time to get it by and pick those up. To date, our town staff have picked up approximately 460 tons of leaves, so I wanted to thank our public services staff for their diligence in getting that done. Town would like to thank the Rotary Club of Jamestown for sponsoring the annual Christmas parade in conjunction with Jamestown Business Association and the Ragsdale Y. That was held on December the 4th, and we certainly appreciate their service to the community. Town offices will be closed on December 22nd, 23rd, and 26th in observance of the Christmas holiday, and on January the 2nd in observance of the New Year's holiday, as well as January 16th for the MLK holiday. There will not be garbage pickup on Friday, December 23rd. That's this Friday. The town will probably run two trucks next Tuesday, December 27th, so our pickup times are going to vary. Please make sure that you have them out there by 7:00 AM to make sure that our crews get those. Recycling should not be affected. The town council will be hosting a budget retreat on Tuesday, January 24th at 9:00 AM at the golf course, so we will begin our budget season, and we review our capital projects at that, that meeting. The public is invited to attend. I think we'll actually set that public hearing, or, excuse me, not a public hearing, but we'll set that meeting date at the January 17th council meeting, but there's a little foreshadowing there. There are a couple of major projects that are currently underway or have been completed. Our golf strategic plan should be completed by the end of this year. We've gotten a draft in, and we're going to be reviewing that with staff first, and then we'll bring it to you. That is our council strategic plan goal number 5.7. Our golf course driving range improvements are complete. Those will, they're open now using the synthetic turf, but they've placed sod out there. That will be in full swing, pun intended, in the spring. Red Miller Park bathrooms, bids will be accepted until December 29th at 3:00 PM. That's goal 5.10. You may have noticed that we had the road closed for some utility work as we've extended utilities over to that site. That's wrapping up, and they'll be replacing the sidewalk here shortly. The golf maintenance building is currently under construction. You can see that. It has come up out of the ground now. They've got some skin on the building. They're waiting on some roofing materials, but they're making great progress out there. That's strategic plan goal number 5.6. Town hall renovations, we're going to be, again, accepting bids on that until December 29th at 2:00 PM. That's goal 5.5. And finally, our golf course bathrooms, we should see demolition beginning, I said mid to late December, it's probably going to be late December at this point, we're running into holiday traffic, but they are getting their permits through the county as we speak, and that's goal number 5.10. Goal number 5.4 of the council strategic plan is to evaluate effectiveness of our current solid waste collection and recycling services. And beginning in early April, as we've said before, beginning in early April, the town will move to a solid waste collection system which is going to be utilizing trash cans. We're going to be sending out important notices to customers in the near future. Please stay on the lookout for more information on those changes. I will dispel a rumor that I heard, and that's that recycling is going to go to every other week. That is not accurate. We will continue to pick up recycling every week. Let's see here. Goal number 5.14 of the council strategic plan is to work with Pine Cross Sedgefield Fire Department to create a plan for fire station improvements. Architects have been reviewing the current conditions of our current building. We're preparing a plan for the future, and we believe that council will be able to hear from them potentially at the February 21st regular meeting. So, we're getting closer to having a plan of attack for that. Goal number 3.3 of the strategic plan asks the staff to seek marketing opportunities to promote Jamestown, and you may have seen our commercial airing throughout the holiday season on Fox 8. We tried to coincide with the Christmas on main events, try to encourage people to come and visit Jamestown. I wanted to say too, Scott Oakley, our Parks and Recreation Superintendent, wanted me to let the council know that the water fountain that was damaged, it ruptured, has arrived. We're going to be replacing that. There is some concrete work to go along with the shelter that was, the shelter floor that was done. Problem is that we're waiting on the weather to cooperate. We have, he has also got new grills, and those have been installed as well out there, so we're making some improvements to that, to that area. We're going to be starting and working on the grant that we got received, a part of grant. We'll start working on that probably this spring. Finally, I want to wish everybody a safe and happy holiday season, so Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Have you had any questions? I'll be glad to answer those.
Well, have you got any news on the solid waste public information video?
Yes. So, my understanding is it's pretty much done. We're waiting on, there's going to be a new website address that people can easily remember to go to, it'll point back to our information on our website, so that we can populate that with a lot of really good information about which days, what will happen, who will be picked up when, our frequently asked questions, our holiday schedule, trying to think of all the things that anybody would want to know about solid waste and put that in that website, so we're currently working on that.
Okay.
Should be, should be before, around the beginning of January.
Okay, but the video is done or about done?
It's, my understanding is it's done. I haven't seen it yet. They're finishing the editing. We're waiting on word that our domain has been accepted.
Gotcha. On the golf strategic plan, that should be ready at the end of the year, will the Parks and Rec Committee get to review that before it comes to the council?
We certainly can do that.
I think that would be good.
Yep. I want to review it with staff first.
Yeah, sure.
Katie and I would like to review it with staff, and once we finalize that, it's in draft form at this point, we just received it, I'd like to have a chance to speak with them, and then be glad to take it to Parks and Rec.
I think it would be great for them to review it first before we get it.
Nothing?
I got a note to myself.
I'd like to segue a little bit off of what you said about Rotary and the Christmas parade. On behalf of the Rotary, the JBA, and the Jamestown Y, I've been asked to issue a thanks to our Public Works staff for the work that they did to make that happen behind the scenes, that thankless job.
Yeah.
And also a thank you to the council for doing the judging for the car float and the Spirit Award, and we appreciate that.
It was fun.
Anything else for Matthew?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any committee reports?
We did not have a meeting in December.
Nothing.
Nothing?
No.
Nothing? Katie, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Nobody.
Yep.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Hold on. Is there any other business?
I do have some.
All I saw written down, right? That seemed like a good thing to add.
All right. Well, I do just want to let the official minutes reflect that Ann Petty passed away December 16th, and Ann was hired by the town of Jamestown in 1974 as a utility billing coordinator, and later promoted to town clerk in 1996. She retired in 2004 with 30 years of service to the town of Jamestown. So, our thoughts and prayers are with her husband, John, and their family at this difficult time.
Thank you.
Then on a lighter note, I would like to thank the mayor and the town manager for the pansies in the front of the town hall. I think they add so much, it looks beautiful. And a thank you to the staff for decorating the town hall as well as throughout the town. I think it looks great.
Thank you. Lawrence, do you have anything you would like to say?
I do. I'd like to interject one quick thing.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. And Merry Christmas to all.